All right, so hi. So the numbers. We've had a lot of information already, so I apologize. I'll start with just a bit of general information. All of what I'm going to talk about is in the report that you all have. The public has had it for a couple of weeks as well, so hopefully this is just a refresher. The district uses fund accounting. This is important because it means that all of the operations in the district are separate. Water is for water, sewer is for sewer. We can't use sewer revenues to pay for building inspection. The general fund is basically everything except sewer and water. There's three operating funds, the general operating, water operating, and sewer operating. The general operating is then further broken down into departments. Some of the departments are common across local governments like Public Works and Engineering. We further separate some into divisions such as building inspection and bylaw. There's no reason those have to be separate, except they report to two different managers. So for our purposes, we need to have them separate. Common across all of our financial statements and the budgets are some groupings that we use for revenues. A summary here of what's in those different line items. For example, sales, sale of services includes all the revenue from lease and rental agreements, user fees for the rec center and campground, revenue from the sale of people at the airport, and revenues the district collects for permits, licenses, and fines. When the financial plan bylaws written, it's grouped by division or department. But for the purposes of discussion, most people find it more informative to have them grouped by type. That's how you see the budget laid out in the report. Again, this is a summary of what's included in me to the line items, salaries and wages. It's not just what we pay our employees. It also includes the cost of contributions, excuse me, and remittances that the district pays, such as our portion of EIA, CBP, pension, and group benefits. There's a lot of references in the report to the operating budget and the total budget. So what's the difference? The operating budget takes last year's budget, takes out the one-time expenses and projects, and that gives you last year's operating budget, which is just what we need to do our day-to-day stuff. There's no fancy extras, nothing like that. After that, we include what I refer to, and I'm sorry, I have to come up with a different word for it. It's referred to in all the reports as inflation. But I don't mean that word by definition. It also includes, it does include costs that are rising because of inflation, like fuel and hydro and insurance and all of that. But it also includes contractual obligations that we have to adhere to, like council's remuneration that's laid out in bylaw.
We're even gonna raise?
You are. Next to. As well as wages that are outlined in collective agreements. We don't have a choice. We have to increase those as we've agreed to. Sometimes you'll even see a negative amount listed under inflation. That's usually because a department head has determined that the budget can be reduced based on past spending, or maybe the budget has been reallocated to a different line item within their own Peter and Peter Jr., not Paul. So when you take that 2022 operating budget, include the amounts for inflation, now you have a 2023 operating budget. Again, this is the budget just to continue with every day things that we do. Any changes directed by council to this operating budget will result in a different level of service for the community. Speaking of service levels, the next part of the total budget. Service levels are changes to the budget that will continue in the future, but they're not necessarily unavoidable like inflation. Service level changes in revenues change the funding that's available to pay for the cost of operations for the district. This is where you'll find the proposed 6.9% increase in property taxes, as well as the increase in utility rates of the same 6.9%, as is outlined in the bylaw. Service level changes in expenses change the cost of providing services to the community. Typically, the most significant service level changes are found in salaries and wages. If we are increasing or decreasing the people that are employed to provide services to the community. In this budget, the most notable service level changes are the elimination of the deputy corporate officer position and the increase to full-time for the bylaw officer that Darren spoke to earlier. Finally, after all that, we add all the projects and initiatives. Projects that are included as carried forward include projects that were approved in the budget last year but haven't been completed yet, such as the downtown revitalization. And it also includes projects that council already approved last year for inclusion in this year's budget. Sorry, I had an example and now it's just. The water tender, yes, thank you. As well as the downtown revitalization and infrastructure that council already approved. So those are included as carried forwards in the budget. Putting all that together, last year's base budget, inflation, service level changes, and projects. Now you have a total budget. So putting all that into the budget here, you can see we're budgeting for revenues of approximately $13.8 million.
It's got read that.
There's something wrong here.
Take the top page eight.
Oh, I'm looking at the operating. So we're budgeting for revenues approximately $13.8 million and expenses and expenditures of approximately 13.5, leaving the district with a budgeted surplus of $310,724.
This is not 32.
Oh, yeah, this is not page 33. I think it's 33.
No? No, now it's 33.
We're close.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to go page by page. I wasn't. I'm third for that for you.
So say what you just said.
So we're budgeting for revenues. This is the operating budget only. 68. Page 68.
Okay, there's those numbers.
There's just a lot of different budgets. There's a $6 million budget, there's a $2 billion budget, and there's a $13 million budget, so.
There's an operating budget and there's a total budget. So this here, this 13.5, this is the total budget. This is with all of the inflation, all of the service level changes, all of the projects. $13.8 million in revenues, 13.5 million in expenses, surplus of $310,000. You don't look like you're seeing them.
I don't know if I'm on the same page. Not down.
13.8.
Okay.
If you had this seven and six.
Like you said, you said 13.5, and then I thought.
Great, now leave that page alone.
Took me five minutes to get there.
Back to the one I told you before.
What page was that?
33. 33.
33.
So back to that operating budget only. This does not have service level changes. This does not have projects. If you remember, I said we use fund accounting. Waters, water revenues use for water, sewer revenue for sewer. Here you can see the operating budget broken down that way. This is just the operating budget. It doesn't have service level, it doesn't have projects. You can see the operating budget includes a surplus of about $24,000 for water, $145,000 for sewer, and a deficit of $346,000 for the general fund. As most of you know, we can't budget for a deficit, so I'm fine.
So you're what?
Fine. This is why we have to increase property taxes and utility charges, and sometimes we have to reduce services, which you'll see in a couple more slides.
So what you're saying is that this 177, how much? How much is 1%? In taxes? So we raised 1%. How much does that equal?
About $24,000.
About $24,000. For 1%? Taxes. And this 177? Comes up to the 6.9. Okay, I'm just clarifying for everybody.
As we come up at 310,000 surplus, so we go from $177,000 deficit with $310,000 surplus.
$10,000 surplus for all of the funds.
That's for every.
But I'm just defining that 6.9% is because of this 177.
And what does that cost of wholesale?
I've got them. So I might suggest that you wait for questions until the end, because I'll totally cover it. So the operating revenue for the district, typical with almost all municipalities, the majority of our revenue comes from property taxes and utility fees. These together make up more than half of the operating revenues for the district. On the flip side, the operating expenses for the district. It's all here. You don't have to flip.
Oh, we can't read it.
I know.
It's yeah.
Be that far, that's why.
We're not.
I'm not trying to be. I'll tell you what.
Okay.
So again, as is typical for most municipalities, the biggest expense is salaries and wages. The district's here to provide services to our community, and we need employees to do that. So it shouldn't surprise you that it's a big cost for the district. No other type of operating expense comes close. And where do your taxes go? Where, what do we spend them on? A visual of the departments that are funded either wholly or partially by property taxes. You can see the department that utilizes the most property tax revenue is Public Works and Engineering. Most people wouldn't be surprised by this, especially after hearing from dawn to night. This department cares for almost all the properties, infrastructure, and equipment that the district owns. Recreational services and protective services together use up both about the same amount. So up until this point in the budget, there's not a lot that can be changed, unless you decide to reduce services to the community or increase, sorry, you could up it to. But even still, you remember the operating budget resulted in an operating deficit for the general fund of $346,000. We need to raise that revenue somewhere. This is where the increase in property tax and utility charges comes in. Even with the additional 156,000 in property tax revenue from a 6.9% increase, the small increase in one-defend revenue sharing revenue and the increase of 6.9% to garbage fees, the general operating fund would still have a deficit of just under $173,000. Again, water can only be used for water, sewer can only be used for sewer, so that increases in the utility rates for those don't help you. Plus, we have a request to increase the bylaw officer from three days to five days per week and to starting the manual replacement of fire hydrants, so we need another $42,000. This is when staff have to find ways to save money. Eliminating the deputy corporate officer position will save the district about $98,000. So our general operating fund deficit now is down to about 125, while we have that surplus of 37,000 and 39,000, sorry, 37,000 for water, 39 for sewer. Now what? This is when we either have to come up with ways to source other revenue or cut services, because we cannot budget a deficit. So that's where our COVID safe restart grant funding comes. In 2022, we use this grant to fund 100% of the cost of the building inspector and the planning technician positions. Obviously, the money we have from the grant will not last forever, so we are gradually reducing the amount of those costs that are being funded by this program. In 2020, we were planning to fund 80% of the cost and then reduce that over the years until it's down to zero. As well, the rec center, as you heard, hasn't completely recovered from the pandemic, so we are planning to use about $26,000 of the grant to offset some revenues that are slowly starting to return back to normal after the pandemic. So after utilizing the grant funding, the general operating fund now has a surplus, and we can all. He knows I'm kidding now. And I'm sorry. We have a number of projects that are being carried forward from 2022. Again, these include the projects that were approved as part of last year's budget but haven't been completed, as well as projects that were pre-approved by council for inclusion in this year's budget. We're carrying forward almost $4.8 million worth of projects, none of which are funded by taxation. They're all being funded through surplus, reserves, or grants. Although council could put the brakes on any of these projects, it's certainly not recommended, and in some places, stopping a project in midstream could actually cost us more if we had to pay back some grant funding that we had already received, for example. And finally, the new projects that staff are requesting. The most significant projects in terms of cost are the second phase of the airport improvements, mezzanine chairlift at the rec center, and some new equipment and inventory for the weight room and community events that Brad spoke of earlier. There's a total of about $1.2 million in new projects being requested with just under 400,000 of the cost to be funded by grants. The remaining $777,000 worth costs are funded by the district's own funds. And as always, we're always looking for new grant funding opportunities and some of the months that we're able to apply for, that were actually approved for. And of course, that would reduce the cost to the district for the project.
Questionable. So the mezzanine chairlift is, if I can read it right, 125, 263, but then it comes 25,000 out of reserve, where's the other 100?
Sorry, it should be under grants.
Grant. Oh, and it should be under grant?
Yes. It's possible that it's leading to starting.
I knew that when I read it. So that. So a mezzanine chairlift, just go up those four stairs.
I, I am not a building expert. Oh, sorry.
Because it is an accessibility issue because of the type of building this is, and everyone's going to roll their eyes when I say this. It falls under a certain portion of the building code that is going to require an architect to be involved or an engineer at bare minimum with the right to be there. So there are those professional requirements to be able to install this to make sure it's done correctly and still leaves enough room in the stairwell for egress and access for others who won't be using the chairlift. It's also structural and supportive building that has to be able to withstand the pressure of someone on a wheelchair.
It's not meant to be disrespectful, but for the mobility impaired, do we have access to all the building? Like, I've only ever seen, and that's just me, I don't know all the rec center, but I've only really seen the mezzanine used for beer garden, watching hockey, or a meeting now and then. Do we need to actually have access to that part of the building?
Sure, one of the reasons why it's only used for those things is because people don't want to use it in case there is someone who needs to access it. For instance, we were looking at having council meetings out there, because it's a larger space that you would be able to utilize better than this space that more people attend. But we can't, because if somebody did want to come and participate, it wouldn't be open to all members of the public. So instances like that, we would be increasing the value of that room by having it be accessible, which is, which is something that is spoken to in the official community plan and also something that the building code and the province has been asking us to do. We're supposed to be striking accessibility committee at some points eight months ago, but it hasn't happened yet. And we'll be looking at things like that, and the purpose is to make all of our facilities as accessible as possible.
And that grant, do we have it yet?
No.
Okay, we just applied, or we're going to.
If council approves the budget, we would apply for it, yes. And in the cases where projects are anticipated to be funded through grants, if we were to apply for the grant and not get it, then it would come back to council to see if you still wanted to go ahead with it, and where are we going to get the money from then? So it's not that because it's in there, we go ahead with it, even if we don't get the grant. That's not the case.
I may have found the 100,000, but it's on the arena heat recovery. The arena heat recovery is 99,000.
Thank you.
Because, so the arena heat recovery meeting change thing is not through grant?
Correct, it's $99,000, all from reserve.
Okay.
Yes.
Brad and I did talk about exactly that very quick. He's quite confident that there may be grants, or that this is such a perfect way for environmental energy.
So that's pretty much the last of the numbers that I'm going to throw at you. The last few slides are more information than detail. This is the five-year financial plan, if you could actually read it. But the focus is always on the first year. We do have to adopt a five-year financial plan, but every year you revisit the budget again. So the future years' plans are likely to change, sometimes quite significantly, depending on the circumstances. It is important, however, to consider next year's budget in this financial plan, because until you adopt a budget next year, that's how we operate. That's how we get the authority to continue our operations, because 2024 from this budget becomes our provisional budget next year, until you adopt a new one. Otherwise, we couldn't operate until we. And so municipal property tax. To keep the budget balanced over the five-year planning period, these are the proposed increases in property taxes, which you probably can't read, but it's 6.9% this year, following five and a half, six and a half, six and a half, six and a half. So it's consistent over the next few years. These will change, sometimes quite a bit. They don't consider the additional revenue that we get from non-market change. We don't include that as part of our budget, because it's not for sure. As well, we're not psychic, as much as I tell Lauren I am, but. So there's always new and increased costs each year, and sometimes new revenue sources each year. So although we are doing a five-year financial plan, these numbers are certainly not set in stone, and you get to do this whole thing again next year.
I'm sure it's in here, but I need to ask a question. So with public works being understaffed and not having this, I'm assuming that when you're doing the budget, that you have us fully staffed when you're doing.
Correct, yes.
Is it fully staffed to the minimal staff? That like, from listening to John Darling, it was like, okay, we could have used, even if we were fully staffed, we could have used another couple of laborers or whatever they are.
Yes, so specifically for public works, for the last number of years, it's been eight employees. Union employees, I should say, and that's what's in the budget, fully staffed at eight unionized employees. And then complemented by four summer students.
Okay, so when you're saying eight union employees is one of those, the public works managers, that's, okay, that's a union employee job as well. It's not a contract.
All right, I'm sorry, did you say that for me? That's who I'm speaking with, sorry.
No, okay, like. Like, right now, we. Can I mention the name? Because I have a little.
Randy was a manager.
Rory, what was Rory?
Rory was the director. So is that, that is not the union.
Okay, so is that in here?
It is in here, yes.
I'm figuring out what she said. So is what you said is the two directors, which we don't have any of them, is in the budget, and they're not union, they're not in that eight guys.
Yes, so altogether, we're budgeting for like 10 full-time public works people and four students. I probably just made that worse.
No, I'm just wondering then, so if if we were to contract something out, like you're saying, I'm not saying cut services, like still provide a service, but contracted out from.
Yeah, we've eliminated the deputy corporate officer.
Right.
But yes, in answer to your question, but we have to be very careful, because our collective agreement doesn't allow us to contract them.
Right, so you have to actually eliminate the position. Is that the way it works? I probably.
Yeah, I think this is maybe getting a little off.
Okay. The summer students, though, we get a grant for partial.
We apply for a grant every year. Last year, we were only given the grant for two, two public works and one rec center, I believe. So we don't always get what we asked for, and nine times out of 10, we don't get what we asked for. But we don't budget for that grant. We budget for the position.
Okay, so we budget for the full position, and if we get the grant, then.
That's a bonus.
That's a bonus. Okay, that's what I, yeah.
Did something relate to me? Why there's a in the discussion, a difference between a union employee and a non-union employee? Is there?
It all depends in the context that you're using it.
Aren't they just all employees?
They are all employees, yes.
Then why?
Management tends to cost more. Correct?
I.
Salary, salary versus out.
From my perspective, from a budget perspective, it's all staff. And we need certain kinds of staff to fill out a service provided.
Right.
Um, we've had problems in public works and retaining the management level of staff. But likewise, we have sometimes filling a union position. In that staff, right now, we're down utility offering, which has a very real impact. But I don't think, oh, that's management, that's, you know, it's a gap in service to patients, but.
Are we required to report what is a union employee and what is a non-ex or exempt?
Yes.
Okay, is that is that why we're in the budget, it is specifically either a union or exempt?
Um, I don't think anywhere in the budget, it's specifically a union or exempt. Um, yes, we are required to report on it for a a lot of the different reports. Um, but we don't budget that day.
It just seems to be like a weird sort of distinction, uh unnecessary distinction.
I I think I was trying to make it clear to councilor Reed that I was talking about the public works room. Um, that's that's where I was.
You lose in manage.
Okay, I have one last question. If we wanted to drop this to sort of six point nine percent as it's. If we wanted to drop it to, if we want to drop it three percent, would that? Mean that we had to drop it seventy five thousand dollars, we have to cut something for seventy five thousand dollars or. A couple of things for seventy five thousand dollars. Would that suffice?
So.
If one percent is twenty four thousand dollars.
It. It's. Six point nine percent. Uh, six point nine percent equals a hundred and fifty six thousand, four hundred and eight dollars property tax revenue.
Because a hundred and what?
Hundred and fifty six thousand, four hundred and eight dollars.
That's for the whole community, that's all we get?
Tax, no, that's a six percent tax increase. Amounts to an increase of a hundred and fifty six cents.
Gross.
Okay, for the district.
So just say, on T five, let's just round about twenty. Twenty five times seven is a hundred and seventy five, so that's just a little bit more, so if we wanted to cut. A certain percent, then we would have to find something in here to cut.
Yes.
What I'm saying.
Yes, there is a small, once it's all said and done, there is a small surplus in the general fund. It's about seventy thousand dollars, um. I wouldn't suggest taking that down to zero, um, but you certainly can. That absolute minimum. With the budget as it is right now, the absolute minimum to keep a balanced budget is four and a half percent.
Why is that? Or to keep it as as it is now?
Yes. Now, you have to consider. The conversation that we had. I remember how long ago it was, feels like yesterday, about asset replacement.
Right. So, and I do, so I think, okay. Asset replacement, if we're looking at that as well, none of this goes to asset replacement. So that will, that will have to come into play at some point. So that's why I'm concerned about this six point nine, if we're looking at asset replacement on top of it. And I would just like to to say too, that this is not, this, this six point nine. Is not included in the water sewer or garbage increase, correct?
It is.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's in the bond.
Okay, so it's it's included in. So we're talking, Randy.
And so. We got all this all figured out without any grounds or anything, so if we start getting grants. Then our surplus will go up.
Correct. If if we're getting grants for something that we were already planning.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So how often does that happen?
It does.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Have you heard that? Oh, I was just saying that, so we. If we're going the six point nines, that would go to the property taxes and then it also goes to the utilities as well, so that.
Correct.
Gets raised as well.
Yes.
Okay, now. I don't know if this is right place, so looking at. Your regular tax statement. Okay, it's broken up into different levies. So this six point nine would only go towards the municipal levy. And then all the others are, if need be, we're told that those ones have to be.
The typical.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Tell us.
Yeah.
What they want.
Yeah, and so I, and so when we get the taxes in, we take them all and then we pay out. All the others to the different things, okay?
Yes.
So I'm just thinking of people and they hear whatever taxes, they look at that total. Number at the bottom, because I only myself realized in the last year or whatever, that it's all. Broken up into the other bits there.
Very generally, fifty percent of your property tax bill goes somewhere else.
Well, I'm hoping you're still going to have something to say there, so I don't know whether to ask the question, you said that you. Couldn't say how much that would be for household. Roll.
Yeah. Uh, in this budget, there is uh there are reservations for for the capital fund. How far was the asset management plans and the consideration when those numbers were put in? Or is, are we still at that bare minimum level that we had uh in the presentation?
This budget as it sits right now is not considering asset replacement.
Why not?
It would be a further increase.
Yeah, council has to direct us to how much.
This budget as is right now, in terms of funding reserves, is still. On target to complete asset. We're not ready to.
So I'm gonna stick here and approve a budget that that's gonna take our assets into the ground, I mean, we had the presentation.
Not ready for that yet, that's the next phase of the project, which we've got the grant funding for. Is to work that strategy, I was just intending just an introduction of something that this community's been dealing with for a hundred years. We're not gonna solve it one year, but we're gonna try and solve it two years. Uh, so when we get into the next year's budget, we're gonna have the framework built with your consultants. To start introducing those very specific increases. Or building up asset replacement reserves specifically to meet that asset management issues. Plus, we just got the announcement from the province about billions of dollars to help us, exactly that, and so we might be able to start tackling some. Real visible issues we know exist in the community now, or even underground issues. So we can use that first bulk money from the province to get us going. And but the the strategy of how to work it in the budget, that's coming next year. And then we'll deal with that over time and hopefully the province gives, ending up billions to us. Right now, we're just not making.
It's a bit of a stick your hand in the sand strategy, like, I mean, we know it's coming. We're not doing anything about.
Say we did the first things we do about it, which like. Maybe have a problem. And and now the next step is, how are we gonna work together to get through that problem? And we're not the only community in this situation, so and and that's, I have a large. I'm guessing the province is hearing that loud and clear because so many communities are now at the stage where we're at. Where we realize just how big this problem is, and the problem is that pressure, U B C M's gonna be pushing whatever it be here. Saying, nice, gotta help us, we're small communities, we can't afford to solve it on our own. It was the fans of the province that got us into this situation.
So so how did the level of capital funding get determined for this budget? And is it any different from us?
So that only capital funding in this budget is for the projects. If if council wants to start um setting money aside now for asset replacement. We can totally do that, you tell us how much.
So last year, we're tw- so the presentation that we had with the the guy. Uh, he said that we're currently putting away, we're spending six hundred seventy five thousand dollars per year or something. Right, but the so somewhere that that. This budget includes a similar amount?
Yes.
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 So we're. So we haven't changed the amount?
No.
Okay. These projects are are being spent, that six seventy five is being put away, isn't it?
Yes. Yes, every you.
We're funding, you're confusing this conversation. Funding the reserves, but then we're funding the projects, so.
Out of the reserves, yes.
But.
But we're paying six seventy five, we're we're something. Away in our reserves, our capital reserves. And then we're spending a bunch of money on projects that have been identified.
Yes.
So for asset management. We have three options, that guy gave us three options on what we were going to do um to put it away. For asset management for the next however many years, and that's what we have to decide. Over and above our our tax increase. What we're gonna do for the community to work on our assets.
Now, did the exercise that occurs this year, when we start the informational campaign, start getting feedback from. Community as to what level of comfort they feel can take in certain levels of increase, or what assets are slow priority. And then that feeds into the budget and then we can actually separate in. The tax notice to say this is how much we've always been doing, basic operations, basic little projects. Separate line saying this is part of our asset management.
But I want to spend the next year.
There's a lot more.
And not that educating and sharing, and I want community buying. I want the community to say, yeah, this is what we want, this is what we want going forward, so. You know, we should spend the next year doing that, and we should also learn it, L G L A and U B C M and those kind of, and find out what other communities are doing. That's our our job to do that. But anyways, I'll let you go back, does anybody else have any questions?
I think I have the way I. That I have in my mind, is that our grants are gonna be a bonus.
Yes.
On your budget, our grants are gonna be a bonus. How much we get of them, you don't know, so you can't put them in there. If you get six hundred thousand dollars for the grants, then we're gonna surplus it in here, now what do we give back?
Yes and no. Um, it depends, were we planning to fund it from taxation? Or were we planning to fund it from reserves? If we were planning to fund it from taxation, and now we've got a grant, absolutely, now we've got an extra six hundred thousand dollars. If we were planning to fund it from reserves. Then our reserve just still has that six hundred thousand dollars, it it's not a surplus.
Well, I'm just thinking when he was talking about it, so we get. Some grants of development, say it's gonna give us.
Yes.
We're gonna have to put some money in there to not get a big whole thing.
Many times, yes.
So that's where those reserves are coming.
Yes.
Possibly, if we get some grants, do something. And we've already budgeted for it, so that goes into our capitals, that go back into our reserves again when we're done. So we can build our reserves.
Yes. Okay, okay.
Journey, am I on the right, I'm running a higher quality PowerPoint? If you, if you can please keep running it on there, just let me know if I'm on the same slide for the recording.
You could see. Uh, so for twenty twenty three, six point nine percent increase in property tax revenue. Would result in the average single family residence paying about ninety eight dollars more for municipal property taxes. And the average business paying about two hundred and thirty one dollars.
Twenty six cents today.
I carry my tax notice with me just for uh references.
So to put that all into context, Lilwet is one of a hundred and sixty one municipalities in B C. In twenty twenty two, the average, or what they call the representative house um value in Lilwet. Was three hundred and fifty nine thousand, seventy one dollars. If you had a house valued at exactly that amount. You would have paid eleven hundred eighty four dollars in municipal property taxes here in Lilwet. Comparing that same valued house in ten different communities with similar populations as Lilwet. That same valued house in Tumblr Ridge would have paid almost twenty five hundred dollars. Um, on the flip side, in Logan Lake, they would have paid about seven hundred fifty. Um, Lilwet ranks sixty seven out of a hundred and sixty one municipalities. In the municipal property taxes that would have been charged on this. With number one being the most expensive, number hundred and sixty one being the most. And and we're.
But. If going way back to orientation or something, and it came up, like it's as far as you compare.
Yes.
Lilwet to Tumblr Ridge because it depends on the services that.
Yes.
Tumblr Ridge and what we have here.
Yes.
The services in Logan Lake, right?
Absolutely, okay.
And also policy decisions on what they decide to budget for funding of their reserves, some of these communities that are three low taxes. Are now in a much worse position to deal with their infrastructure replacement. Tumblr Ridge is pretty bad. That helps too. And also how spread out the community is, when you have large lots, you've got more roads, sewer, water. That has to be, you know, larger cost to maintain your properties, especially funding. That infrastructure and parts of the province. Dicks or communities tend to be able to be more efficient.
Almost done, I promise. Um, I just picked a couple of the financial health indicators to go over, there's more in the report, obviously. Um, these are really important ones, in my opinion, not that any of the other ones aren't. Uh, first, total expenses to property tax revenues, you can see the trend, the dotted line for the district is increasing. Um, this indicates that our expenses are increasing faster than our property tax revenues. Um, an increasing trend like this is not sustainable. And it does indicate that the district needs to either increase its property tax revenues or decrease its it's. Its expenses or a combination of those two.
Or we're just finding better sources of revenue, like grants and other things. Sale of services, donations, or whatever.
And I, yes and no, there's another one to do with that. Um. Property tax revenue and sale of services to taxable assessment, we use those two because those are um favorable bias. Um, that property tax revenue and the sale of services, so more along the lines of what you were saying. Um, here you can see the district's ratio is trending down. And again, this indicates that we're not increasing our own source revenue at the same rate as our assessment rate is increasing. And it does suggest that the district needs to increase the revenue we could collect from both property taxes and sale of services. And finally, the districts, are you having to do that too?
Yeah, no, it's okay.
The district's government transfers to total revenue is trending upwards, indicating the district is relying more on other levels of government for revenues. This can be due um to large infrastructure projects that are grant funded, which is not necessarily a bad thing, obviously. Such as the peak in twenty twenty one, due in large part to the grant for the refrigeration plant. Here at the rec center. Um, the ratio is better if the trend line is relatively flat. Um, if it's going down significantly, then it indicates that. Um, if it's going down significantly, then it indicates the district needs additional funds from taxpayers to supplement those grant funds that we're not getting. And just a couple of colorful graphs and then we're done. Um, district's anticipated balances in each of our appropriated surplus funds. Majority of these appropriated surplus funds are held in the stabilization reserve. This is designed to be used to fund major emergent operating issues, one-time or intermittent projects, and to offset unrealized revenues. Last but not least, anticipated balances of our reserve funds. You can see the vehicle and equipment reserve is expected to decrease significantly. I can't even talk anymore. Um, in twenty twenty-three, mainly due to the purchase of the water pender truck. Um, also, the recreation reserve is expected to go down this year as well, due to the large number of projects that are being proposed for the Rec Center. And these reserves and their allowable uses are established by violence. So, I know I gave you a whole ton of information. I apologize. I hope it wasn't too overwhelming. Most of this, as I said, is in the uh, report that you were provided, so this was hopefully more of a repressur. I'm sure you have some questions. I could try and answer them. If you think of them in the middle of the night, don't call me email.
Okay. You can open it up for questions.
Sure. All right, escape.
Any questions?
I think we asked them.
After the jest. Let's say, any last comment? Okay, um, well, my last comment, I, I hate taxes. I hate tax incentives. Um, because I always think of the cumulative effect on a year after year. So I look at five years. If we increase them a hu- or like a hundred dollars per house in five years, that's five hundred dollars. I, I worry that this is just a small drop in the bucket when we have, we don't know that the school is increasing and S L V is increasing and, you know, lots of other people want money from our, our taxpayers, kind of business. Um, yeah, so definitely food for thought. Having said all that, I think that uh, we've learned a lot tonight. I want to thank you guys. You've done a great job, a great congregation. We really appreciate it. And uh, your heard was appreciated as well. Thank you.
So if I could just say
Sure.
to take this home with you and let it digest, as I know. Um, and then, as I mentioned, Tuesday, when we come to the meeting, that's where you tell us what has to change in that, what you want changed in that. So it's gonna be, um, you get to rip it apart.
And how many more meetings after that are we having?
It depends. Um, it all depends on the direction that you give us on Tuesday. If it's just a couple of small tweaks, we can probably just go direct to a regular council meeting after that. If it's some major significant changes, then we'll probably wanna have at least one more um, committee in the hold to discuss the changes before it goes to the regular meeting for three readings.
Just of what you said about um, the other other entities, when would we know if they were increasing taxes? Do we have
We don't.
Or is that just out of the blue?
We, well, they're required to let us know by certain times, and it depends on which agency it is. Um, the one that we wait the longest for typically is the school and police tax. Um, which is the biggest one, of course, um, and the most significant. Uh, and there have been times where I don't find that out until the, the beginning of May.
And everything comes out in July.
This has to be adopted by
By November, yeah.
In the end, all our surpluses that we have lined up here, and some for water, some for, we'll get Bay Junior can't pay the other guy.
That's right.
Um, what is the cumulative number of?
I don't have my financial statements. We're about thirty-nine thousand dollars of cumulative surplus right now. That does, though, include our tangible capital assets. Um, so I, I'll get you an exact one. I can begin.
Like, that's not just for this year. Like, over, over, like, when we first had our, our meetings and whatnot, well, we got seven and, um
Twelve and a half million.
What's that?
Twelve and a half million.
Twelve and a half million. That, that
It's not a cumulative surplus.
No, that's in our bank.
Okay. And what do we use that?
Pay everything.
We don't really have that in the bank, so.
We do.
We do have that in our bank.
You do.
It's a C I B C bank. If you ask for a statement, see twelve and a half million.
Yes.
And we have to pay the, like we gotta pay all our wages and everything on the assets. Your whole budget we're working on.
Well, then, so
And I have to look back, how much, how much money do we have that we don't need to pay up? The one we got in the bench, sort of.
So, we have, I think it's, it's now down to twelve million dollars in the bank. But, so for example, and I'm sorry, I keep picking one Darren because he's the one in the uniform.
Bullseye.
For the water tender truck, five hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's coming out of our reserve. But our reserve doesn't actually have cash. That comes out of, out of our bank again. Right? So we, we need that money to pay for these projects that are being paid out of reserves. And we need that.
I understand that. I just wanted to know the, the, the number there that isn't actually allotted for something. I mean, like, it's there for something, but it's not already spent, sort of.
Isn't that around five to seven? If you wanna know what to reserve, like the phone reserves on here.
That's sitting in the bank?
You must know what the, the bank, like, it's just, like, there's twelve million in the bank, but a lot of that is
It's spent.
Yeah, right. So what is left over? After everything is spent, what is the total?
It's, I can't give you an exact number right now.
It's a bug.
Yeah.
Got it.
I think I just have my financial statements off the top.
And so, can I, can I ask a question to the answer on Tuesday? Right? So, the, the budget as presented contains about two point two point nine million dollars in wages, correct? Yes. So, I mean, whatever. Um, two point nine, nine million dollars on wages. Of that, we're, and that is based on, on a full house that we're able to fill every position. My question, number one, is how likely? How feasible is it, how realistic is it, that those positions will all be filled? My question number two is under contracted services, we budget uh, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars. In part, it says to backfill the duties that would typically be done by vacant positions, such as the director of public works and utilities. My question is, if we're budgeting for the payroll of the director of public works, are we also budgeting for the contracted services for a contractor of public works?
No.
So the seven hundred thousand dollars is not related to, because that's what it says. It says retain external contractors and consultants to fulfill the duties that will typically be done by vacant positions such as director of public works.
Yes. So in, in a year, our contracted services costs are often much higher than they need to be. Um, I, it's not quite the right way to say it. Because these contractors are doing the job of an employee that we don't have. But when it comes to the budget, I budget, and I'll just take the director of public works, for example, because it's an easy one. Um, I budget for a director of public works. I do not budget for a Don. But Don's costs come out of that budget that I had for the director.
Sorry, but, but the, the contracted services budget is actually increasing over the actual contract service from twenty twenty-two, when we, when we had a contract, a, a contractor for public works and a bunch of others. I mean, it, 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 it has nothing to do with Don or whatever, I mean.
It was just an easy example.
Right.
Yes.
But, um, so how is it possible that we're increasing our contract, the budget compared to last year's actual expenses? When we had all these positions filled with contractors? How are we increasing that as well as increasing pay wages against twenty twenty actials going up as well? That is something I just don't understand. And, and just to me, it feels like we're double counting all these positions, both as a, as an employee, as, as a contractor.
So the contracted services budget is not just these people like Don.
No, no.
It's also um, lawyers. It's also um, our accountants. Um, they're all included in contracted services. Um, and a lot of the increase that you're seeing this year is because we have these eight million dollars worth projects that we aren't doing, contractors are. I, I think perhaps you're thinking of contracted services as just people that were contracting to do the duties of our employees, but that's not even close to all that's in there.
But then, then I just don't understand your comment on page fifty. The, the budget for contracted services in twenty twenty-three slightly higher, I mean, blah, blah. Uh, onto the district's need to retain external contractors and consultants to fulfill the duties that will typically be done by vacant positions such as the director of public works. This basically says that in this budget, there is money for the contractor to do the duties of a regular employee.
We have a budget for a contracted approving officer because we don't have an approving officer.
No.
Um, but that would, in most cases, be a district employee, but we don't have one. So yes, I budget for that. But there is not a budget in there for um, the interim director of public works. There is not a budget in there for um, the one day a week bylaw officer. There is not a budget in there for most to contract right now. Um.
I see, he's a person.
Uh, yeah, local economic development is budgeted for. Um.
Fire.
But there's not a budget. There is a budget for fire inspection, such.
So maybe it was just a bad choice, maybe it's a bad decision, it shouldn't be used, or in that sense.
Just have public works.
And, and perhaps it was a bad, bad wording in there. So what I'm saying right now
Not double budgeting.
Yes.
I'll need to be convinced of that.
I'm, I'm happy to show it to you by line item if that would make you
Yeah, maybe if there's a breakdown for contractor consultants and engineers, uh, so that we can actually see, because uh, uh, it uh
Why do we have a veterinarian?
It's uh, I think it's about a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And it's just for when we actually have the animal control. Um, we often have the pets that need to be stated or neutered before they're adopted.
I'd like to adjourn anyone you're ready.
Okay. Well, it's a common one. Until Tuesday night, please make your appointments by uh, uh, email to Joanie. If you have any questions for tomorrow or Monday or Tuesday. And if someone moves that the February sixteen, twenty twenty-three, we need the whole meeting be adjourned at eight fifty-five. Brandy, seconded by Patty. We're good to go. All in favor?
Yay.